Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for August 18th, 2020. Item number one.
We got no sound on this end.
Good?
Does that work? Is this on?
I can hear you now.
All right, let's start over. Good evening and welcome to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for August 18th, 2020. Item number one, Mr. Reynolds, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Brennan.
Here.
Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here, thank you. Moving ahead to item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible of liberty and justice for all. Item number three, approval of the agenda, are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
There are no changes, Mr. Mayor, except there is an addition. We originally had left off the resolution for 7C1, resolution number R2020-TAC-097. That has been included at this point. I've run that by Mr. Thompson, and he says there are no legal issues with us including it.
All right, so that was emailed to counselors this afternoon. I have a revised copy, or the copy, I guess it's not revised, but it is the copy, so everybody has that. Other, other, move forward, Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the notations.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan to approve the agenda with the noted resolution. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye, thank you. Moving ahead then to item number four, consent agenda, are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Consent agenda before us. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent business.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Before we vote, then we would read the consent agenda into the public record, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for August 18th of 2020, 4A1 approves amendments from the August 5th, 2020 meeting. 4B1 approves contracts with Greystone Construction and Midwest Fencing to add a rear public entrance to the community center, an amount not to exceed $74,200. 4B2 approves contract with Horizon Commercial Pool Supply, Global Specialty Contractors, Fisher Brothers, and WW Goetz Associates to complete critical maintenance at Sand Venture Aquatic Park, an amount not to exceed $208,200 plus a 10% contingency. 4B3 declares miscellaneous items held by the Park and Recreation Department as surplus property and authorizes their proper sale or disposal. 4C1 approves the Metropolitan Council Tax-Based Revitalization Account Grant Agreement. 4D1 adopts resolution number R2020-TAC-096, which awards a contract in the amount of $243,568.86 to SM Hentges and Sons Incorporated for the Regional Storm Water Treatment BMP at County Government Center Lot A, which is Project Storm 2020, excuse me, 22-TAC-001. 4D2 approves a right-of-way and drainage and utility encroachment agreement for 1004 Miller Street South. And finally, 4D3 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with AE2S to perform design services for the SCADA system improvements, which is Project Sewer 19-TAC-005, an amount of $54,300.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second of the consent agenda. It's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving ahead then to item number five, I'd like to call on any resident, citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, we would, unless we had any other comments that were submitted?
We did not, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving ahead, item six, items removed from consent, there was none. We would move then to 7A1, which is our financial monthly review for July 2020, and Nate will present. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Nate Ranhart, Finance Director for the city. Tonight, I wanted to provide a review of our monthly financial report, as well as go over what the city has submitted so far for coronavirus relief fund expenditures through July 31st.
Hopefully, all council members can see this PowerPoint presentation.
This slide shows the general fund through July. Overall, we're trending positive for the year. The end of July represents 58% of the way through the year, and our revenues are at 62% of budget, and expenditures are at 52% of budget. We did receive an additional first-half properties tax settlement from the county last week, which are not, which is not reflected within these numbers. If you recall, they offered to defer the first half payments without penalties for those impacted by COVID. Following that second settlement, our first half collections were actually up from 2019 as a percentage of the levy. The only other item I wanted to acknowledge, intergovernmental revenues, that includes the 3.1 million in coronavirus relief funds, which I'll talk about in the next couple of slides. The other variances, we've discussed previously, and I've also talked about them within the council memo. Quick update on the coronavirus relief funds to cities. As mentioned, the city received 3.1 million on July 3rd. The city is responsible for determining the eligible expenses that qualify for the use of funds and maintaining that documentation. Additionally, we are required to report to the state how much we spent on a monthly basis. That first report was due on August 11th, and it covered March through July. Our documentation of the expenditures will be subject to a single audit that will be completed within the course of our normal audit, our normal annual audit at the end of the year. Funds cannot currently be used to replace lost revenue, and any unused funds must be returned to the state. As mentioned on August 11th, we had to report to the state our expenditures that cover March 1st through July 31st that are eligible for coronavirus relief funds. The amounts are reported in one of six different categories. This is a summary of the incurred expenditures by the city submitted in that report. So on previous month reports that I've presented to city council, I presented them based on what we've tracked within our sub-ledger codes. And in this presentation or this slide here, it's in the format of what we're utilizing the CIRF funds for. We submitted a total of $2,245,063 in eligible expenditures, $57,000 related to supplies and personal protective equipments, which include protective shields, sanitizer, disinfectant, wipes, signage, building modifications, gloves and face masks, $162,000 in emergency paid leave, which accounts for employees who are unable to work as a result of Minnesota's stay-at-home directive to mitigate the spread of virus, $861,000 in police payroll, which include hours worked from March 30th to May 24th, where we had modified staffing scheduled utilized by police officers and sergeants. I'm sorry, you can keep that slide up. And then $614,000 in fire department expenditures. As you recall, we modified the staffing schedule so that four on-duty firefighters were at the station Monday through Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and then on Saturday and Sunday in order to prevent all 45 firefighters from arriving at the same call at the same time. $358,000 was included for substantially impacted personnel duties. That would be outside of public safety expenditures, which include staff that, staff hours used for policy development, tracking expenditures, technology process changes, communication, et cetera. $70,000 in technology expenses incurred to provide employees the ability to work from home, electronic public meetings and teleconferencing. $91,000 recreation refund expenditures that were necessary as the city required, was required to implement social distancing standards and close our public facilities, which included the community center, swimming pool, ice arena and park facilities. And $10,000 for the city contribution towards broadband deployment in response to COVID-19. And then $21,000 related to equipment breakdown as a result of the ice arena closure. Lastly, I just want to mention the city council did approve $200,000 in small business assistance grants, which is eligible under CARES Act funds. We're currently in the process of granting those funds over the ice.
That would be in the next report.
Correct.
Okay.
And then my last slide here, it's discussing revenues, which are not eligible for coronavirus CARES Act funds. We're seeing the most significant impacts in terms of revenues within our park and recreation revenues. We're down approximately $787,000 in comparison to July of 2019. There have been some offsetting costs, including part-time and seasonal staffing, supplies, utilities and cleaning services. But even with those offsetting costs, we're down a net amount of about $470,000 through the end of last month. So that concludes my update, and I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Questions, counselors? Counselor Whiting?
Yeah, I have a question, and then when it, back on the slide for the CARES reimbursement, you had $860,000 for police payroll. Is that straight payroll, or is that above and beyond for the, in response to the COVID?
So that is basically just covering the period of March 30th through May 24th, where we modified our staffing schedules, kind of in response to COVID-19.
So because of the modified schedules?
Yep. Now, each city is doing it a little bit differently from my discussions with my peers. Some are including all public safety costs, some have different things that they're using. So it's been kind of across the board, but that is what we've chosen to report at least through July 31st.
Thank you. And then a follow-up on the, are we going to have any trouble still in that one on the Zamboni repairs? I mean, that seems a little odd that because it was shut down, we had to put 22 grand into it.
Yeah, you know, that is, that is the oddest thing on our list. We fully recognize that, but the reality is, is under the standard for COVID reimbursement, it is eligible. It specifically is an expense that was generated due to COVID. If it wasn't for COVID, the Zamboni would be in use during the time period. The problem was because it sat, the batteries went dead. It needs to be used over a period of time in order to keep the batteries fresh. We had an internal discussion on it. We looked at the three criteria that are used to determine whether it's an eligible expense, and it clearly falls under the eligible expenses, but yes, it is an odd, it's an odd duck.
And we have something in place to make sure we maintain those batteries now?
Well, yes, I think that if we were to do it over again, we would have done differently. We would have had somebody go into the building and rotate the machine around a little bit to make sure it was used, but at the time, we didn't recognize that this would have happened, and the order was not to have the facility open, so.
Right, thank you.
Great. Counselor Lehman, you had your hand up earlier?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the first page of the monthly financial report, under total revenues, 62%, my arrow is facing upward, and I see Nate's arrow is facing downward. I take it he's got the updated version?
No, the, it should be going upwards as it's a positive variance, so I apologize for that error. I thought that wouldn't go unnoticed on this slide.
Okay.
But that is, but that arrow should be going upwards.
All right, and then I had the same question on the Zamboni, so I won't ask that again. My last question, Mayor, was the $200,000 in the small business assistant grant. It's not showing as a city expense. Is that because it came directly out of the CARES dollars and it didn't come from us for reimbursement?
Okay, so the $200,000, as of July 31st, we had not loaned those funds, so that may be why you're not necessarily seeing it within these slides, so it will be a city expense and a, you know, reimbursed by federal funds, so it shouldn't be shown in more places.
If you goes to your CARES Act funding slide, the slide with the Zamboni on it.
Oh, sure.
You see that $200,000 is not shown as a city expense along with the rest of the expenses?
Yes, Counselor, that is essentially because at that point, this only goes to July 31st. So at that point, we had not expended those funds yet, but this council had authorized them to be, to be spent, so we wanted to make sure that we noted that on the comments section.
Right, will that, will that be a city expense, or since it's funded through the CARES dollars, it won't be a city expense, but it'll just be an expense tracked?
It will be a city expense because the city has accepted the CARES funding and then used the funding for that.
Okay, so next time we see this slide, that actual spend will be moved over to the left?
It will, and I don't believe we've utilized all $200,000 of that either, so I don't believe it'll be a full $200,000, but that is correct.
Right, but we can, we can put what we did spend to the left.
That's correct.
Okay.
That'll be, that'll be in the next report.
In the next report, yeah. Counselors, more questions on this financial update? Seeing none, Nate? Thank you very much. Appreciate that update. All right. Moving ahead to 7A2, the Shakopee Public Utility Commission abolishment and vote resolution, and Nate will present. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This agenda item and resolution is in response to the motion that was made at the last meeting. Before I begin my formal remarks, I want to address something head-on, because that's kind of my style, and it's that I've heard a lot of people saying that this is one person's kind of charge against Spuck. And I would like to make really clear that I'm sitting in here in this chair making these statements because I believe them to be true, and I also believe that the leadership of the City of Shakopee that's sitting behind me believes to varying degrees that these statements are true. I can also go back to the mid-1990s and see documents from the leadership at that time that demonstrated that a lot of these statements, particularly those relating to the relationship between the city and Spuck, are in fact true. So with that, I would like to just go ahead and jump right in. I'm not going to belabor a lot of these points. We've been over them many times over the course of the past couple of years, but the problems that we've seen with Spuck are first and foremost, I think, public health and safety. The water quality in Shakopee is in fact objectively, objectively lower than in our surrounding communities and as compared to most of the communities throughout the metro area. The data that's up there was taken from the water quality reports from each of those communities as of 2017. And I actually just looked today, and I noted that Shakopee has not gotten any better in the most recent report, which I believe covers 2018 for 2019. Another problem that we've seen is the lack of cooperation, collaboration, partnership. We specifically note in the memo, the attempt to unilaterally adjust pilot, and the fact that Spuck submitted the city's water plan to the Metropolitan Council without even talking to us about it. And then ultimately, the lack of accountability and transparency. Over the course of time, we have faced hurdles, roadblocks, stonewalling relative to data requests that if you were to ask the city for, we could respond to within about 15 minutes. And then also, as most people are aware, there are clear violations of state statute that Spuck has engaged in. The other thing that I've liked, that I'd like to address to the greatest extent that I can, is what would happen if the ballot measure passes? Certainly, there are some unknowns, but for now, I think what we're comfortable saying is that water and electric utilities will continue without interruption. That is not a question, that will happen. We can use assistance from MMUA, and we do have existing city leadership who have experience running both water and electric utilities. The city council would assume authority over the utilities. We do not anticipate that we would be reducing existing staff, so utilities staff would retain employment. Utilities will be integrated into city departments, or the city could contract with outside providers. And then we would work on alignment of our central services to improve efficiencies. Those are things I can reasonably say will happen, but I know that there are lots of other questions. I've been asked a lot of them today and yesterday. So, next slide. The action before you would place a ballot measure on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot, asking voters to decide. If the measure does end up on the ballot, city staff will continue researching options for managing the utility. We will do everything that we can to educate the council on those options for managing the utility. We will continue to provide factual information to the public so that they can make an informed decision, and we will follow state law by not advocating for a particular outcome, because we are not allowed to say vote yes or vote no. We are allowed to provide facts, and we are allowed to provide information. And we will undoubtedly, as we always do in this organization, keep our focus on ethical, accountable, transparent, and best for the community values. It's unfortunate that we can't answer every single question right now, but over the course of time, more information will come out, because we want to be 100% ethical, 100% factual, and 100% transparent.
Thank you. Just to start off, our city attorney for, to have this action before us at this point, there's no state statute requiring us to have a public hearing in this regard?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, for some reason, my video's not working, so, as I sped out, get that corrected as we go on. Yeah, there, I'm sorry, I, make sure I understand the question. Could you just repeat it again?
Yeah, for this action that's before us about putting an item on the ballot in regard to this public utility, there's no state law requirement to have a public hearing?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, no, there's no public hearing requirement at all. You have to have a public meeting like you're doing right now, but not a public hearing. That, of course, doesn't prevent you from allowing people to speak on it if you choose to.
All right. Just wanted to have that as a point of clarification. Who would like to, do we have questions of staff? Counselor Lehman? Counselor Lehman, did you have your hand up?
No, I did not.
Okay, I guess we can't see your face, so I apologize. Does anybody at counselors have a question of staff? All right.
I'll take a question. Mr. Burkett mentioned that there could be no discussion about this lobbying type 4 or... type for or against this, uh, uh, ballot measure if approved. Um, how will we be able to get those facts? I think you mentioned you'd be giving facts out. Um, are we able to do that, to communicate, uh, what the issues are to the public?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe I can help on that one?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the, what, what the law is, is that the city, uh, as a body, as an entity, can't, uh, expend public funds or advocate one way or another for the, for a ballot proposition. The city can, as an entity, uh, produce, um, documents that are factually accurate, uh, somewhere along the lines of what Mr. Burkett just explained to you and statements that he made. There are facts that you can present, uh, that, uh, educate the voters, and then they get to decide which way, uh, they want to vote. A good analogy might be a, um, school bond referendum, uh, which, you know, happened fairly frequently. Uh, in that context, the school district as an entity can't sustain principle, they cannot spend public funds or as an entity advocate, but they can publish brochures and, and factual information. The advocacy has to come, and sometimes does come, by independent organizations that are formed to either support or oppose a particular ballot proposition. But I do want to distinguish that from individuals, be they council members or otherwise, as an individual, you have the right to, uh, give your opinion one way or the other on a ballot proposition that the city has put on the ballot. You can't spend public funds to do that, uh, but you do have a right as the individual, and your First Amendment right, to, to, uh, promote or oppose a ballot proposition. So, uh, we need to distinguish between the city as an entity, uh, and, and public officials, the council as an entity versus you individually, which you have a right to, um, to, uh, to give your opinion. I, Bill, Mr. Reynolds and I have exchanged emails, and we're all on the same page in this. I think we, uh, we, uh, you know, understand what the rules are, but if there's any further information that the council would like on this, we'd be happy to provide that to you.
Okay. Um, thank you very much for that overview of what a city or entity can do or not do, and what others could do. Questions of staff or comments on this? I guess, uh, you know, I, as we stand here with a question before us on a separate utility that has stood its ground for seventy years, um, to me, I served on that commission for a long time, um, to come to this point in time is, is not a proud moment, but I think as I've wrangled with this, uh, opportunity for the choice in front of the public, um, to have the public have a choice. Also, I, uh, watched the, uh, tape of the, uh, August thirteenth meeting. There is a confidential report out there that hasn't been released, and that's fine, but when they came out of their closed meeting, there was, uh, conclusions and recommendations read and voted on in the, in the public realm. Of the, of the three points, um, the, there was a salary violation of state law now that was noted by the state auditor, um, and also by the investigators, and that was for four consecutive years, uh, by the, uh, manager of the utility. Also, on point number two, I, the investigation concluded and made a recommendation that the public versus private packet aspect of that, um, was confirmed, and, uh, and then they made recommendations to, uh, to improve that. There was a third, uh, point of investigation, um, that they found, uh, no malice, and it was a action of a, of a report that went to the state, and it didn't, what was in the packet and went, went to the state weren't exactly, but, uh, um, what I think I got out of listening to that, uh, the Commissioner Meyer, who's an attorney, reading the, the attorney report, investigation conclusions and recommendations, um, that I felt that certainly things were not what they seemed. I think that as we stand here over the last couple of years and come to this point, um, I believe that maybe we should have a vote of the public, not of this body, um, and, and see where it lies. We can talk about, uh, you know, the issues that have been going on, have been going on for years, decades, um, and it, some say this is about the past. I guess this, this vote, if this resolution passed, to me, would be about the future, and, um, and depending on our action tonight, um, the future still needs to be analyzed one way or another. And those are kind of my roundabout opening comments on this. Like I say, I've wrangled pretty hard with this. Councillor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for your, for your insight on that, but I wanted to just, you know, say a couple of things. The information is out, um, and like you said, I know it's not a choice that we will be taking. We're, we're gonna, you know, ask the, the, the community to do it, and I feel that the areas of concern, um, have been, you know, shown to us, and the best thing is, you know, for, it's time for the public, you know, to, to take that vote, to take that choice, and it's a situation that when, you know, it, we're not trying to hide it, the evidence is there. I'm just saying, you know, we're letting, we're giving out the information, we'll let you choose, and if you feel that, you know, we can fix this, all we can do is tell you the problem, try to fix it, find, find a resolution, and that's what we're trying to do. So I think we're trying to be as transparent as possible, and, um, I'm up to, um, offering a motion if, if we're ready for that.
If you'd like to make a motion, are we gonna have further discussion?
Awesome. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-nine-nine, which calls for the election of, on the question of abolishment of the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission.
Whiting, second.
I have a motion and a second by Councillor Whiting. Councillor Whiting?
You're on mute.
I'm sorry, Councillor Whiting?
Sorry about, sorry about that, I forgot the mute button. You know, I said a lot of points on this at our last council meeting. There is concerns of mine with water quality, uh, definitely, uh, an issue that hasn't been addressed. It's, uh, been on their, uh, CIP for many years, uh, with them not moving forward with any kind of a water treatment plant. The collaboration and transparency has never been there for, from my point of view. I don't think that's an issue to shut down the utility on, um, but it's certainly been a major issue. Some of the state issues with the payroll and, uh, other concerns are an issue. The fact that we can't come together on, on a, a plan for, you know, economic development, we're the highest charged, uh, if someone tries to build a building in Shakopee, it's one of the highest fees from the public utility. So I, I support this, I think the, the, to give it to the voters and, and let them decide.
You know, as I look at this issue in, in both history and totality, I don't, I don't feel it's the issue of the delivery of the commodity. The, I know that we talked about water quality, but the delivery of our water, the delivery of, uh, electrical service to our community is, uh, is very good. The delivery of those, but it's those internal components that, that concern me, and, um, I think that with this investigation, based off what I heard at the public portion of August thirteenth, if the leader of the organization should be above the law, if, it gets to me, I use words like integrity, morals, value, and the amount of trust that was put in to that manager, um, of any organization, and then to find that there was a violation of state law, uh, for a couple of years, um, and I, I certainly have known the manager there for, for twenty-plus years, and, uh, and that, that was telling for me, um, on that aspect, along with the other issues of collaboration, communication, trying to be one city, one team, um, there's gotta be a better way. Any other Councillor?
I, I wanna talk you about some of the things that, um, have been in the conversations over the, um, at the utilities. Um, recently, we had to ask for an updated water, um, treatment plants feasibility study. Um, the last one was, um, twenty-one years ago, um, and they were basing their information and, and, uh, decisions on a twenty-one-year-old report. Um, we had asked for, um, uh, uh, there was a leaky water main, well, there wasn't enough money to pay for that leaky water main. There was a budget error on the water tower, um, that was over in the Windermere, um, uh, area, and, and the solution was just, well, we'll just raise the, the water connection fees. Um, so there's never a real good feeling about, um, um, working for the community, working for the ratepayers, working for the businesses that are coming in, being collaborative in their information. There's never enough money to pay for things, and we recently charged, uh, a business two-hundred and thirty thousand dollars in water connection charges, um, but, you know, we never have enough money to pay for things to get corrected and fixed. Um, I think there, there, um, this is an opportunity for the ratepayers of Shakopee to see a better system being put into place. Um, we're pretty, um, the, the utilities company is pretty antiquated in how they're doing things. Um, you ask questions, and I personally, um, in being on, on, as a commissioner, um, I can never get answers, um, I can never get anything put on the agenda, there's never a clear opening, um, on, uh, getting information. I've been told I have to go through certain people to put, put something on the agenda, and that's not true. Um, so it's been a frustrated frustration, I, I feel that there's never an open story that's going on, um, and I have to constantly ask questions. I mean, if I'm constantly asking, asking questions about what's going on, there's a lot of things that we don't know. Um, so this is an opportunity for us to, to change that course. That's all I have to say. I have more during my liaison report, so I have a lot more to say.
Councillor Lehman, do you want to weigh in on this?
No, sir, no comments.
There is a motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? I guess I, I, I thought there would be more discussion on this important matter, but... Councillor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, uh, if, we've had a lot of discussion, and I know the community is aching for more information. The fact is that red flags have been going up for years, and, uh, we've been kind of dancing around them, and, uh, to hear some of the concerns, I hadn't even heard about the water, uh, tower discussion, uh, haven't been paying attention, I guess, to that, but, to me, that, that's another red flag, and that's, that's the, basically, their taxpayers or the, the ratepayers' money, and, and we have to watch out for that. We've had the school board issue once, uh, we don't even know what we've got into on the public utilities quite yet, but, uh, this is a red flag to me, and it needs some attention right away, so I'd like to call the question.
I have a motion on the table and a second. The question has been called by voice-vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Councillor Contreras?
Aye.
Councillor Brennan?
Aye.
Councillor Whiting?
Aye.
Councillor Lehman?
Negative.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The motion passes. This item will be on the November third, uh, ballot. Let's move ahead then to seven A three, to update of the tobacco ordinance, and Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, as, as you all know, uh, the tobacco, uh, language was changed at the state and federal levels. Uh, this is simply putting us into compliance with those particular laws.
Okay. Questions of staff? This is making sure that our ordinances match that of the states. Is that correct on the new T twenty-one?
That's correct, sir.
Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, the one question that I had was in the highlighted yellow area, and it was the administrative penalty. Is that the same as our liquor law violation administrative penalties? Because I assume for an individual, they would get a ticket, and that would be a regular court process ticket, not an administrative.
That's correct, Councillor, that, that's exactly what it would be.
Uh, more discussion? Questions of staff? Councillor Brennan? Okay. Councillor Lehman?
Law for ordinance zero-two, zero-two, zero-dash, zero-zero-nine, mending Title eleven, Chapter one-ten, and Title thirteen, Chapter one-thirty, the city code relating tobacco sales and use.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Brennan. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye. Uh, I, oh, I apologize. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, call the vote?
Councillor Contreras?
Aye.
Councillor Brennan?
Aye.
Councillor Whiting? He appears to have dropped off. Councillor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars? And Councillor Leh, or, excuse me, Councillor Whiting has dropped off the call.
All right, so the motion passes four to nothing with, uh, the technical issue on the council member.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you all. Moving ahead then to item, uh, seven B one, which is the Lead Academy.
He's back on.
Do we want to record his vote?
Uh, you certainly can.
So, Councillor Whiting, we apologize for that.
No, I apologize, I had to, it's the Shakopee internet again.
We were, we were having the, uh, voice vote on, um, on seven- We were having the voice vote on 783, the tobacco T-21 update.
My vote is aye.
Okay, so noted. Then motion passes five to nothing. Thank you very much. Welcome back. The Lead Academy Certificate of Acknowledgements. And Steve will present. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for this time this evening. And just a brief presentation here on my part. But over the past couple of years, we've had four actual members of our staff that have been attending supervisor training. Three completed the training, one more has one more class. So... But we want to highlight the three that did complete the training tonight. So it's Ryan Helverson, Micah Heckman, and Jamison Teis. And they are tuned in tonight. I see their names up there. But what they did was, over the past couple of years, they've attended a series of seminars and workshops. They range from about three to four hours apiece pertaining to public supervisor training, kind of getting to that next level of their careers. And it takes a lot of time on their part and a lot of dedication to squeeze this in. It's in connection with the League of Minnesota Cities. And we're just asking you to provide recognition for them tonight, and congratulations. And we do have a video that the League of Minnesota Cities put together that I'd like to show you. And on that note, I cue Andy.
Thank you. We'll watch the video, and then we'll come back and have comments.
Greetings to Ryan, Micah, and Jamison. My name is Dave Unmack. I'm the executive director of the League of Minnesota Cities. The League is proud to partner with Sourcewell, Metro State, and the Association of Minnesota Counties to offer the Lead Academy, an educational opportunity designed for employees who are supervisors for those that may be looking to move into a supervisory role. The Lead Academy provides a unique option for cities to prepare emerging leaders with the skills needed to effectively lead within an organization. Those skills include things such as conflict management, leading through change, encouraging and developing others, ethics, coaching, and even more. Being a great supervisor is more than being good subject matter expertise, you know. Learning how to lead, motivate, and influence people and teams takes practice and commitment to your professional growth. In times like we are in now, focusing on personal and professional growth is an important priority. I'm proud of each of you in the city of Shakopee for participating in this program. I want to personally congratulate all three of you for being one of the first graduates in the Lead Academy program. I wish each of you the best in your career. When you go the extra mile to learn how to be a better leader, you, your city, and the whole community are better for it. Ryan, Micah, and Jamison, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you someday at a league event, and I wish each of you all the best. Have a great day.
Thanks, Dave Unmack.
And Mayor and council members, one last thank you would be a thank you for your investment in our continuing education as city employees. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I think ongoing training is vital to our city staff. I know we provide it, but it takes the employee to step up and want to take that training. So it's... I think, obviously, training at any level is key. And I personally congratulate Ryan, Micah, and Jamison on their accomplishments. And thank you very much for stepping up and on this training. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd like to say they're welcome for the investment that we've made. We would prefer that you use that investment here, meaning, don't leave us with this new training that you received, and apply what you've learned. And we appreciate your time and efforts outside your regular duties to make this commitment to better yourselves and the people around you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor Contreras?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to say thank you for your dedication and effort to doing this. Your continuing education is very important. And I'd like to piggyback on what Counselor Lehman said. Let's keep that here in Shakopee. Don't go anywhere else. And thank you very much. Yeah, thank you for your dedication, because it takes time. And sometimes you're like, super tired and don't want to do it. But you still did it. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Counselor Brennan?
These are three great employees I've had an opportunity to talk to in the past. And I appreciate the fact that they're taking steps to improve themselves, but also our community, and bringing that information to their employees and to the other people in the city of Shakopee. And so really, thank you very much for the work that you've done. And I look forward to hearing more from you.
Counselor... Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, all I have to say is Ryan, Micah, and Jamison, thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck. Appreciate all your work you've done on this, and congratulations.
Great. Thank you all. Moving ahead, then, that was an informational item. No action needed. Let's move ahead, then, to 7C1, Planned Unit Development Amendment to South Bridge Crossing East, Preliminary and Final Plat of South Bridge Crossing East Sixth Edition. And Michael will present. Michael, when you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you all see that? Yes, she's shaking her head. This is a Court Crossing PUD Amendment, Preliminary and Final Plat. This is the subject property. This is between the Home Depot and the Marcus Theater. So the site address is 1620 Crossings Boulevard. The current lot size is 6.89 acres. Proposed lot size for the first piece is 1.71 acres. That's the apartment site. Current zoning is B1 Highway Business, South Bridge Crossings, Planned Unit Development. The guiding is mixed-use center, which allows a density of 30 to 60 units per acre. The proposal tonight, before you, was for a 61-unit apartment building to be platted at a density of 35.7 units an acre, a 4,000-square-foot retail building, a 19,600-square-foot retail building, and a 27,636-square-foot grocery store. Similar to what you've done at Canterbury on the last project that has the Greystone Building. Tonight, you'll be approving kind of the concept and the specifics for... The concept for the whole site, but the specifics tonight only for the apartment site. When the other projects move forward, they will come back for a PUD amendment. You'll actually see those projects. So tonight, you're only looking at the site plan. So here is the site plan. Two retail buildings, proposed grocery store, and then, again, the apartment building, which you'll actually be approving tonight in the plat for the apartment building. As I said, it's 61 units for residents at 60% below the area median income, which is $62,000 for a four-person family in Scott County. Eight of these units have been reserved for veterans, so 13% of the units. This is an unusual unit mix from the projects you've seen. It's 14 one-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, and 23 three-bedrooms. The required parking is 121 spaces, so they have provided 806 spaces on-site. Because this is a PUD, they are allowed to have shared parking. And there are other spaces on the site where the residents could park. So this is the actual PUD that you'll be approving. These particular renderings, colors, et cetera, will be approved as part of this project. And as was discussed at the planning commission, these were areas that need additional improvements. If you remember, in a PUD, they have to meet and exceed our current standards. So these changes need to be made in the building when they submit for their building permit. Again, here are the plans. It has parking kind of at grade. There are subsurface water issues here, so they can't do below-grade parking. These are the upper floors of the building. Again, we have a significant number of larger units here. And this is the proposed site plan for this evening's project. So a fair amount of landscaping, playground. This is the project, if you remember, has applied for a TOD grant from the Met Council. Eligible sites must be within a quarter-mile of a transit station. The city applied for the grant in June. And it has passed the first round of screening. And there's another interview on this project. And then we will get a decision sometime in late August or September. And that's to make additional pedestrian improvements in the area. So this is the part of the South Bridge Crossings East Sixth Edition. So Planning Commission recommended city council approval of the PUD amendment and preliminary and final plat by a vote of six to zero. Happy to take any questions.
Hold on, he's pulling them over.
All right. Michael, thank you. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
There are two questions. The first is, where's the excess parking going to go?
Mayor and council, there's additional parking for Home Depot and the movie theater today. If you remember the site plan, there's a future retail. There'll be also additional parking in the area that the residents could park in. Because of these larger units, and particularly with the units for veterans, we are not as heavily parked as you would see for a market-rate project. But the applicant, Megan Sandcar, is here tonight. And she can... They'll be running this project and will be the operator. And she'd be happy to answer any questions.
The second question, Mayor?
Yep.
The second question is, one of the slides showed that it was being designed for, was it 62% of median income or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Who's paying the difference?
Mayor and council, this is a tax credit project. So they did receive an allocation of low-income housing tax credits from the state. And they also received some additional funding from the Scott County CDA. And so that's what makes up the difference. This has been pretty typical that we've seen on the projects in Shakopee. So the Willows, out at Windermere, all these projects use tax credits, which bring private equity into a project. And again, the developer is here, and she can talk about the structure of the financing.
Okay. Counselor Brennan?
Yep, I was looking at the garage and where the garage entrance is off of the... I can't remember the name of the road is. It's a really long entrance, so it seems that it will just... I have concerns about the garage door... People exiting the garage and then people coming in, turning at the... Off of Crossings Boulevard and onto that road. So is there any conversation regarding that?
Mayor and council, one of the plans that the TOD grant has is to do some additional sidewalk and median improvements in the area. So hopefully, we'll get that. I think that it's not a very large garage, so we don't see a lot of traffic. Actually, the surface parking lot is where most of their parking lot is, that's behind the building.
Okay.
Good.
I saw that... I have another one. I saw that we have a traffic study done, but I didn't really see how it affects County Road 21. And I know that County Road 21 already has a lot of traffic on that road. Has there... Any conversations regarding that?
So Mayor and council, this site originally was all kind of designed for big-box retail. So residential trips for an apartment building is probably nine to 10 trips per day. The Home Depot and the movie theater would generate significantly more trips. So had they moved forward with a big-box retailer on here, you know, Costco or something, you would have seen significantly more trips. And they would have been much more oriented towards that highway, because it would have been regional traffic coming here to shop versus these would be people coming and going from their homes. So I would say the traffic impact probably would be pretty minimal.
And then, other questions? More follow-up? Counselor Brennan?
We had a discussion regarding a mini-park that was going to be located on this site. Is that still in the plans?
Mayor and council, there are plans to do. The state requires a playground on-site. As part of the Parks and Recreation Discussion and Planning, there is a privately-owned park across the street. We have spoken with that homeowners association, actually at the request of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And we're getting an appraisal done for potentially acquiring that, making it a city park, because it would be midway between this particular project and all the new homes at Stagecoach. And it has a playground. And that was one of the things we heard from all the new homeowners at Stagecoach is that there is no playground in the neighborhood. So that's another potential option. And then as part of the TOD grant, if we were to get it, there would be some pedestrian enhancements done for that crossing to that park.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick questions. I had another one, but I think it's been answered. Mr. Kurski, on one of your slides, you were showing that there's a couple of changes that need to be made to fit into the PUD design. Have we heard back from, like, the developer? Are they willing to do that? Is that okay? I mean, I know it's a request to be done, but are we good with that?
Mayor and council, I mean, that... Those changes need to be made to meet our guidelines that you all adopted by ordinance. So whether this was... Because it's in a PUD, they're required to exceed that. But we need to meet the minimum standards. And those changes are required to meet our minimum standards. So I think the developers asked that question at the planning commission. And on their particular building, the apartment building, they understand those changes need to be made.
Perfect. Okay. And then the second one. I don't know if you know, or is it determined later? For the amount of the grant that they applied for, is that known? Or is that just given, I guess, at the time that it's granted?
Mayor and council, that's a pretty competitive process. And I think we'll learn more kind of on the second round when we meet with the Met Council. This isn't like the other...
Okay. Thank you very much.
The other grant that we approved tonight, that actually is very specific. The TOD program typically goes to more of the urban areas. We're lucky to actually get... We're this close to a transit stop, that this is probably the only site in Shakopee that qualifies for this program.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
I have a question, Michael, back to loop back around on the parks. So there would be no green area for a lot of this. It looked like for the apartment building, a lot of two- and three-bedrooms. So I'm assuming families. And that's great. But then, for them to go across the street, which is a tot lot at best, and then that park off of Stagecoach that is just being developed.
Excuse me. So Mayor and council, this is the green space of the front. The state does require a small playground on the project. So this is sort of the way it laid out. We actually required an enhanced entrance here off of the front. So this is actually really the back of the building, because the parking lot is the front of the building, to allow access for both pedestrians going to jobs in this area, but also to the play area. And then you have all these balconies here that will look down on the play area for safety.
Okay. And then my other question is that this preliminary and final plat is just on the apartment building. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, that's correct. The only piece we're plating tonight is that, if you remember, when we did the Southwest Development at Canterbury, we had a concept site plan that you all conditioned so that moving forward, the developer has some idea of how the rest of the site could be developed. But again, those buildings would have to come back for their own separate approvals.
Thank you. And I apologize. Counselor Contreras, you had more? Or someone had more?
No, no, I didn't. I was done. Thank you.
That was Councilmember Brennan, raised her hand.
More questions of staff?
I did, but I'm not really sure if it's for the staffer or for the builder. I know that there's been a need or a desire for larger unit... Larger... More bedrooms per unit. And I know that these are the typical one, two, and three bedrooms. And I think some of the conversations have been that the units need, like, four bedrooms, because they're larger families. So I don't know if that's been discussed by the builder or anybody in Shakopee.
And Mayor and council, Megan Sandcar is here tonight and will be happy to answer specific questions on the project.
The applicant and/or their representative, come forward. And good evening. Welcome. State your name and address for the record.
Megan Carr, Wake Park, Minnesota is my business address. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I don't know which camera is on me right now.
This one over here.
Oh, this one. Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you. To start out, I'll just answer... Um, to start out, I'll just answer a few of the questions that you asked, and then I'm happy to take any additional questions. Uh, so with regards to parking, um, I believe that the conditions require a hundred and four stalls, um, as recommended by staff, and there's a hundred and six on site. Um, that's, um, you know, less than, um, is required by the city, but we believe it is adequate based on the number of units we have. Uh, we have eight units dedicated for veterans that specifically have a Met, um, Metro HRA VASH voucher associated with them, so not all of those individuals would necessarily have vehicles. Um, and then we also have eight units, um, utilizing housing support from Scott County, and, and again, those are one-bedroom units, and they also may not have vehicles, um, which makes this site a great location, being so close to transit within the city of Shakopee. Um, it's very ideal to potentially not have a vehicle if you cannot necessarily afford one. And then with the two and three-bedroom units, we often find that they maybe have one, at the most, two vehicles, very rarely do we find, find that they have more than, than two vehicles. So, um, we feel that this parking is adequate for the site, and then if there is a need in the future for additional parking, we do have the shared parking within the shopping center, so that would allow us to have some overflow, um, options. Um, I know there was a mention on the larger units, um, we, we have looked at four-bedroom, four-apartment buildings, it creates a little bit of a challenge. HUD guidelines indicate generally, uh, we limit our, um, bedrooms to two individuals per, um, bedroom, meaning that you could fit eight individuals in an apartment, uh, unit if you went to a four-bedroom, ten for a five-bedroom, and we found that to be, um, more better suited for townhome living, uh, give a little more space. Uh, we own and operate, or have an affiliate owner, um, of Boulder Ridge Townho-, excuse me, Boulder Ridge Townhomes, which is just, um, also in Shakopee, and those are, um, I believe, three and possibly four-bedroom units there. Um, we do have some four-bedrooms through our port- portfolio, but they are mainly townhomes, due to just allowing additional space. Yeah, I think, I, if there's any other questions that you, I'd be happy to answer them. I can't speak on behalf of the retail developer, but Steve Soltow is here, um, and he can answer any of those questions.
Other questions?
Councilmember Lehman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor, go ahead.
Mayor, my question that I asked, uh, Mr. Kerski, was, was deferred to the developer, so I'll ask it again. The, the presentation says that the apartments are gonna be like sixty-some percent of median, um, income, so where's the difference coming from? And Mr. Kerski deferred to, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, ma'am.
Megan, yeah, Megan Carr.
Yeah, I'm happy to an-
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that, unless you have more to elaborate on.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, tax credits are allocated, uh, by the federal government to each state based on the populace of that individual state, and then the state allocating agency, um, determines a qualified allocation plan, and every state, um, determines that based on what that state agency and the governor and commissioners believe is most appropriate for Minnesota, for nine percent tax credits, which are the competitive round of tax credits. And so we submitted an application, uh, as you may recall, we came before council last May, I believe, um, for a, um, recom-, or, I don't know if it was approval, but it was a notification and a, a request that you, um, recommend or, um, further our application, and so we submitted for tax credits to Minnesota Housing in June. That is a competitive round, meaning that our application was lucky enough to be selected for tax credits. So those tax credits, in general, um, are s- most likely sold to an outside private party. Uh, they're sold for those individuals to take the tax credits, or usually corporations to take the tax credits, and then in exchange for that, our develop, they pay, uh, the developer or the owner of the property, uh, so many cents on the dollar, and in exchange for that, we agree to keep the rents affordable. So that's how these deals are structured, to allow for affordable rent. For this particular project, we are committing to forty years of affordability. So for forty years, this project will serve individuals at sixty percent AMI or lower. Many of our units are at, uh, or some of our units are at thirty percent AMI, and they will remain as long as a subsidy is available to pay that rent.
Where does, where does the CDA funding come in?
Uh, the CDA had, also had a competitive application round, um, back in March or April of twenty nineteen, and, um, I'm not sure where their money directly came from for that round of applications, but we submitted a competitive application, and we're lucky enough to be selected, and that will either be, I believe, um, in our case, it is a low-interest loan, or, or zero percent interest loan, I don't know off the top of my head, but, um-
That's directly from Scott County CDA.
Yes, and it's directly from Scott County CDA.
And answer your questions, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Further questions of the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
I would like, yeah, so give Stephen a question.
Okay, next.
Thank you.
Steve Soltow, Shakopee Crossings, we're the landowner and developer on this. First of all, I want to state, for the record, I mean, we are fully on board with this project. We support it, it actually came to us, it was brought to us by Mr. Kerski, conceptually, it was with a different, uh, user potentially, but the whole idea of the tax credit housing and utilization of the rear part of this site was something that, he had, the city actually brought to us, and we're thankful for that, thank you. As this has evolved, there's been a lot of effort. Uh, it's been a long timeline and a long process, and, uh, and unfortunately, one of the components of this is on hold, thank you COVID. Uh, the retail portion of this, uh, had some legs under it with the initial plans and the layout as it evolved originally, and in the most recent months, we've run into challenges. Uh, retail probably more than any other category of, uh, of, uh, real estate is very challenged, and we're trying to work through that, but case in point, my real estate rep on one of the anchors of this that I was talking to came down with COVID and was out, and while he was out, then his company totally tapped the brakes, so the retail portion of this is on hold, uh, and I just want to be very candid about that, and I also think it impacts, uh, the conditions that are laid out in the proposed resolution, because there's a number of items that affect our property, which is an outlot, uh, today and going forward, so it does have to come back before you again. So I respectfully request the deletion of conditions, uh, three, five, seven, nine, and fourteen. And I'd be happy to discuss them individually if you have comments or questions, concerns, uh, but I want to just kind of leave it at that. They're affecting the property, uh, burdening, they're, they're gonna make it harder for me to do the retail, and I'm supporting of this, but I can't have additional burdens on an outlot and a, and a, a component that's less defined today than it was even two months ago. So respectfully request that consideration. I want to throw in one other, uh, component, just to make sure everybody's aware of this. This land is part of our TIF district, and was part of the soil correction work that we did, and one of the really major benefits of bringing this mixed-use component in as a residential component, it's not subject to fiscal disparities. So it really adds to the likelihood of, uh, the success of the TIF district and repayment of those funds. So, thank you very much.
Obviously, we want it successful. Um, uh, Steve, you, uh, this went to the Planning Commission, and this resolution hasn't changed, were your issues in regard to these, uh, conditions brought up at that time?
No, they were not. They were not really made available at that time. Everything came out late. I didn't have it, and I didn't see it, and as the presentation presented, it was exclusively about the apartment project, and the plat on the apartment project. Megan actually shared with me after the meeting, several days after, because we were talking about it, and said the city had required as a condition the sidewalk between the grocer and the retail strip, and I said, "I can't do that. I can't agree to that." And I had, had a conversation with about, heard about that previously, but I was totally unaware that it was in the conditions, so.
Well, a lot of this is sidewalks and, uh, parking and landscape to have it, some continuity to the project, and throughout that, um, I've read it, you called me an hour before this meeting tonight, seven o'clock, on something that already passed the Planning Commission. Steve, I appreciate all that. We've really worked hard as a city and your developer to bring that, these pieces forward, but, um, you could either pull your application tonight, or-
I'd table it if it needs reconsideration. I'd table, I'd ask that it be tabled if we need to reconsider these conditions.
Okay.
That's significant to me.
Other questions of staff, or of the applicant? Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, Mayor, maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused, but I'm looking at some of these conditions, and if he's, he said three, five, and seven?
Three, five, seven, nine, and fourteen, and most of them revolve around green space in, uh, island, sidewalks, parking, um, pedestrian connections, I mean, why wouldn't you want that? Landscape islands to make it more green in a parking lot?
I must be on the wrong page, because my number three says, uh, pay applicable fees, number five is easements, will be shown on the final plat. Seven is electronic CAD files. I'm missing, I must be missing it.
Yeah, I'm missing it as well.
It's on the proposed resolution. You might be looking at, it's on the proposed resolution itself.
On the-
Yeah.
The resolution that was sent out this afternoon?
Oh, that's the one I don't have. All right. Let me get my phone up.
Which was not in the council attachments, it was in the Planning Commission attachments, but it was not in the council attachments.
I can go into my email while I got the Zoom up on the same computer, can I? Let me, let me find it.
Sure, you can, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not that tech savvy.
Okay. Counselor-
I'll crash it.
Uh, Mr. Ty, uh, excuse me, Counsel Whiting?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Soltow, every time you bring a project to this council, you want a waiver on the sidewalks and the tree plantings and, uh, all the parking issues. Frankly, I am sick of giving those waivers out to you. That's part of our policy, as far as I'm concerned, the tree plantings, the, the walkability, I'm just gonna put that out there, so you know where I stand. I'm not willing to move on that. I know you ask every time, but I'm not willing to move.
Mr. Whiting, if I can, I would address a couple of them. You know, there's ambiguities in the condition as it's written, there's a reference to electronic notes, uh, not a good reference when we try to look at this two, three, four, five years from now. It might not even be on file or available at that point in time. There's some clarification and cleanup here that I think should be looked at and addressed, and the easiest way to address that tonight is simply to remove these conditions, because they really don't apply. You'll be able to, to tell me to comply with code when it comes back, uh, and we have more definition to what I'm presenting to you, and you'll have the code at that point in time, you'll have the opportunity to impose additional conditions as a PUD. You'll have every opportunity, but right now, it's a blank slate, and I need it to remain a blank slate.
Okay, more? Counselor Lehman?
Is there any detriment to tabling this to the next meeting and letting the applicant and staff work out whatever their concerns are and bringing it back?
I, I would point out, council and mayor, that, um, Ms. Carr is the applicant on this, so it's really her call here. I don't know what their timeframe is.
So I think, uh, Mr. Soltow has indicated that without the removal of these, he's not willing to move, uh, to, uh, allow this to move forward, and we would rather table than have, uh, a negative results on the, on this PUD. So we would prefer to table it if that's the direction that council would like to go. But our, as far as our application is concerned, we are, um, agreeable to re, to focus only on the apartment building if, um, the council is open to that. And I think Mr. Soltow's, um, items that he's asked to be removed only relate to Outlot A, so I just want to mention that.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table this to the next meeting, giving staff and the applicant time to work out the, uh, conditions wording.
I will second that, Mayor. I feel the same way.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras.
You have the city attorney with his hand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's Jim Thompson. Uh, Mr. Kerski, uh, tabling it for that length of time, are we gonna have any problems with, with, uh, statutory timelines for reviewing, and if so, I'm assuming that by agreeing to the table and the applicant will be granting an extension of any of those timetables if we need a-
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, I think the applicant, um, Ms. Carr would have to agree to that in order for this-
And we, we are agreeable to extending it for the period of, um, one meeting at this point.
Written request for extension.
I couldn't hear her, okay, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you for that follow-up. I have a motion and a second, Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Mayor, does, does that, uh, need to be in writing from the applicant, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, verbal's fine. It's on the record here tonight.
All right.
Some of these issues about parking islands, green, landscaping, pedestrian connections, walkways and access, I think are, are very important on these points, and, uh, um, it's part of the continuity of, of the entire situation. So, um, we'd like to see some of these in, stay in here as we move forward, but they can, see what they can do, and we'll see it back. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, it's not, my issue isn't necessarily with what's in there, my, my issue is that I'm hearing from the applicant and the developer that, uh, some of the definitions may not be clearly defined. So, uh, to me, it's semantics.
Okay. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan? Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. All right, we'll see this back. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to seven, C2, review the draft request for proposal for the feasibility study for SandVenture. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Peggy Sumihi, I'm the Senior Long Range Planner for the city of Shakopee, um, and tonight I just have a very short presentation on SandVenture. So we, um, talked at the July meeting on the fourteenth, um, about SandVenture and its future. Um, as you know, as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, um, a lot of upgrades and enhancements for a lot of city facilities were involved in that, including SandVenture. At the same time, um, Parks Director Tobin has talked about some of the needed repairs, um, for SandVenture, as well as the desire from the city council to continue operation of the facility, um, but also thinking about new activations, um, perhaps increased year-round use or longer hours, as well as ways that we might generate new revenue out of the facility. So with that direction, staff has prepared an RFP, or a Request for Proposals, for firms to bring the facilities to the same level as many of our other community amenities, such as City Hall, um, the ICE Arena, or the Community Center. So this is really thinking about SandVenture, um, and how we can put it to the same level as many of our newer facilities. This Request for Proposal would ask for firms that could bring us kind of a four-part or a three-part approach. First, an aquatics repairs and upgrades, um, so thinking about what the pool might look like, what other amenities might need to be there. The master plan, for example, asks for an additional slide, so really thinking about what could be added to the facility to make it better. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still on that slide. The second would be the design of a new building. So the building, um, has a couple of issues, the most major being that the men's locker room is not accessible from inside the building. Um, we also don't have pretty standard features like locker rooms for community members. Um, there are lots of improvements that the lifeguards, Caitlin and her staff have been making themselves, such as continually repainting, um, tile is falling off the building. So, um, I think the useful life of that building, staff has determined has perhaps- life of that building, staff has determined, has perhaps expired. So this RFP would ask for an architectural firm that would bring forward new designs for this building. That building could also be improved, perhaps to either be relocated or have concessions that face exterior into Lyons Park, which means that perhaps disc golf people could use it, that during the winter, we could sell hot cocoa out of it while people are ice skating. So really thinking about what that building might look like. Some improved design of the pool deck and its amenities, consideration of better integration and visibility into Lyons Park. So thinking about if a concession stand were to face exterior into the park, would the ice arena need to move so that it's a little easier for skaters? And then just a business plan or a pro forma around year-round activation and increased programming. So if we were to make some of these changes, how much new revenue could that generate for the facility? So these are just some photos of the existing space. More photos are in the RFP, which we would submit so that firms could get a good sense of what the facility looks like. Obviously, this is not active. These were taken just a few weeks ago, but it gives firms just a general sense of what the facility looks like. So the next steps for this would be to ideally get some comments from you tonight and be able to post the RFP by the end of the week. We would give firms about a month to put together some proposals for us. We've outlined the criteria for what those proposals should look like. In the RFP, we would then interview firms who have submitted RFPs, and we would hope to kick this project off in October with a completion of April 1. So giving that time over the winter to look at some of these upgrades and repairs, and then perhaps some of those could be integrated right away, and some of those, we may consider how those fit into the CIP over the long term. So with that, I can answer any questions or take any feedback that you have on the RFP. I think if there's, you know, really specific wordsmithing, it might be better to email that to me and I can incorporate that. But at a high level, I'd love to take any feedback.
Thank you, Peggy Su. Questions of staff? This has kind of been the direction of, of the council here when we had our workshop discussion and also that, you know, we're going to put some money into the, the critical maintenance today and then look at, look at what San Venture can be and try to activate that if possible. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think this is great, getting some ideas of what we can do with that facility. I know the Shakopee Lions are very active at Lyons Park, aptly named. So I just want to make sure, maybe not in the, in the process of the proposals, but that they're, the Lions are at least involved in the communication of some of the presentation of the materials, and that could act as a little, little bouncing step for, to get a little money involved from the Lions, too, to help maybe make it even better. So if we can keep them activated and involved, I think we'd be better off.
Well, I appreciate that the Lions would like to pay for this. Let's just wait off on that and see how this proposal comes out. Counselor Lehman? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm a little bit confused on exactly what it is we're doing. Are we looking to hire a consultant to put together a grand plan? I don't know. Sky's the limit, $80 million, $100 million, or what exactly are we looking to do here?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lehman. Obviously, there are some terms kind of outlined in what is in the RFP. So at a pretty high level, there's not any major replacements. Like, this proposal doesn't propose removing the pool itself or relocating the pool. So those are pretty big expenditures. Of course, I think there would be some expense with redoing a new building, and I think it's perhaps time for that. But that would be under the direction of staff and kind of really trying to stay true to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Some good work was really put into that, and the community had a lot of feedback on that. And so I don't think staff would direct that, you know, an $80 million plan, but I think we are looking at some investment into this facility.
Well, the reason I bring it up, Mayor, is at the workshop, we specifically decided not to go down that road yet, pending the outcome of the economic fallout from this COVID. But it sounds like we're going to go down this path regardless of what we discussed and decided at the workshop.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, Mr., or excuse me, Counselor Lehman, that's not the direction that we received as staff. What we did receive was to take a look at the, the critical factors and work on those, and then to start planning for this in the future. All this does is put an RFP, which is a Request for Proposals, out so we can get different organizations to take a look at this and kind of see what ideas they can come up with. That would then come back to, to you to ultimately determine who you want to go with in regards to any future actions. So this, this is nothing more than essentially trying to find a consultant for the future. There will be, this, this does not spend one dime on the facility itself. We did earlier today approve those critical functions that, that council had directed, but there was nothing from council in regards to not doing anything else. The direction actually was to, we want to do the, the core stuff now and then plan for the future to see what options were available. And that's exactly what we're doing.
We were pretty adamant about and clear that we didn't want to do these core things now, only to tear them up later.
And that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay. And do we know how much this study and RFP is going to cost?
Yeah. Mayor and councilmembers, we don't know. We did have a preliminary estimate. I think it's fair to say we'll be spend probably between $90,000 and $100,000 on this work. But that would include some renderings of the new building. It would include a pro forma that would analyze if we were to perhaps keep the facility open later or add new activations where we might have some increased revenue. So we're not necessarily just getting some pretty drawings. We'd be getting a lot of information about how to better operate the facility with the increased improvements.
Last question?
Yes, go ahead.
Is the $100,000 that we're looking to spend, is that budgeted?
Yes, Councilmember Lehman, that is currently in the CIP as part of renovations to Lyons Park.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. At our workshop, again, I think we really had that laundry list of critical things of where we're at and what we need, and we kind of agreed that we would go forward with those, the chlorine aspect and the slide, which we voted on tonight. And then to try to come up with some ideas of where, where we want to go in the future to, to maybe bring that facility up to speed, to make it more engaging, to make longer-term use out of it year-round or more than 60 days. So, and we'll find out by this Request for Proposal and another decision point down the line when we receive those and look at them. Other questions, comments from Counselor? Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ms. Peggy Su. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Um, I just, going back a little bit to our workshop, yes, I do recall, I mean, at least on my side, that I was for doing everything we could possibly do to reopen for next year and then to look for a plan, some got, you know, to look to see what we could do for future. Because again, we did talk a lot about how it's one of Shakopee's treasures and how our, how we've seen that it's where our, our community unites and it's, you know, where they come. So I know that we did talk about, we were looking for something for later. And two things, Ms. Peggy Su, that I just wanted to mention, the building. I am for trying to find or get more information on rebuilding the building because, yes, the access is bad. I've been there many times and it's hard. And then, like the entrance, like where the, the front, like where you pay, you know, the, the entrance, it's like, there's a wall on the side. It's like hidden. So that, that to me is like you need more visibility. So I am very up for trying to see, you know, get a plan, get a, get a vision of what, what, what can be offered, what can we do. So I'm, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? If not, I think staff has enough direction to go forward, and then we would put this out and then see those proposals come back, and we would have a, another discussion and possible decision point.
Do you need a motion?
I don't think there's any action required. Is that?
No, there's no action, Mayor and councilmembers. Unless you have edits, I'm welcome those. I think we, staff would like to put this out this week so that we can keep moving on this. So if there's anything in specific, I welcome a call or an email about that.
And you're the point of contact?
Yes.
Excellent. Other comments, questions? If not, we can move forward. Peggy Su, thank you very much. Let's move forward to seven, C3, a resolution to apply for an EDA Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistant Grant Applications for the CARES Act. Michael, welcome.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So just to clarify, this is not our CARES Act money that's coming from the state. This is part of Congress has set aside. So the Economic Development Administration has a regular program. They were given a special allocation. There's about $250 million that went into the Chicago office for the Midwestern states of Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Illinois. And that is the CARES Act funding that we're getting this application for. The EDA, our, the Shakopee EDA has previously approved this resolution. The staff at the federal office came back and said, we also want a resolution from the city because the EDA owns the land and it's likely the city will do a deal with the EDA to build the building. So they asked for a resolution from the city. I will say we've gotten great community support letters. Senator Klobuchar sent a letter of support. Senator Smith is working on a letter. Congressman Craig sent a letter of support. Representative Tapke, and then locally, companies like Emerson, RAR, Xcel Energy, we've had a lot of, people are really excited about this project. The SMSC sent a letter of support. So the reviewer said this is one of the few projects he's seen where he's, the very high level of interest from both the senators and also from the local community.
So this is a resolution of support. We've already made a motion to apply for the, apply for the funds. We had a resolution of support from the EDA. This is from the council, and we've enjoyed broad support on this at every step. Counselor Lehman?
Why are we picking up all four years of the operational expense when we have these partners, or supposed to have these partners?
Mayor and council, again, this is, it doesn't necessarily mean the city's paying for it, but the city ultimately is on the hook. If we get the 16 or 17 million dollars from the federal government, we need to make sure that we find partners or we come up with the funds necessary to cover the shortfall. Most of that shortfall is actually the, what we call depreciation, what you consider rent. So it's money coming back to pay for the facility in the future.
Right.
So you're, you're assuring us that you're going to be asking our partners to help offset the operational costs of this building?
Mayor and council, the city administrator, we're talking, if, if we get this grant, we'll be doing a road show.
I can assure you that not only we will be asking our, our current partners, but we will take a traveling road show out to every council to explain to them about how this is a regional facility and it's going to be benefiting their residents and citizens just as much as ours. I guarantee that.
Right. Counselor Brennan?
Um, Mayor, I, I may, would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R2020-098, authorizing submission to the Economic Development Administration, a grant requesting, grant request for the construction of the Shakopee Innovation Center.
Wait a second. I have a motion by Counselor Brennan, a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Let's move ahead then to eight A, our city bill list. In front of us for our review, no, no motion needed. Any questions? Counselor Lehman?
Did we get any more CARES Act requests than what's listed?
For the grant?
Yeah.
Counsel, or, Michael?
Mayor and council, so it was a fairly exhaustive review, and some smaller businesses took a little while to get us the necessary paperwork, but we have funded, I believe, about $140,000 to local businesses. And that's everything from about $4,000 to a sole proprietorship, and then a number of larger businesses got to $15,000. So there's, we still had about $60,000 left.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So no questions on the bill list. Eight B, Liaison Administration Report. Counselor Contreras?
Alrighty. Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, SDA again attended the free groceries and produce food drive. On Tuesday, we served 1,096 individuals, and then on Saturday, we served 1,274 individuals, both in an hour and a half. For the school board, the school board, no formal decision has been made as to the program models for the start of the 2020-21 school year. This plan will be finalized and announced at the district's August 24th board meeting, which be, which will be live streamed and accessible online. Also, I know lots of parents are asking communication regarding, you know, selected IHD and Shakopee online programs. All of those will be shared at the end of the day on May 25th. Information regarding the teachers, you know, who your child is getting and all that good stuff, the support, the supply list will follow as soon as possible after the August 24th board decision is made for the, you know, from, after the board decision is made. One more thing. Also, the board approved a resolution outlining pandemic response decision-making process, which included a approval and creation of a pandemic response advisory team. And I was asked to be part of that, and I will, as soon as, you know, we start going and doing more meetings and stuff, I will start reporting back on that, too. Um, two more things. I attended August 13 and 14, the National Leagues of Cities. It was a virtual summit to discuss equitable solutions for the future cities, and we held conversations from combating, combating financial impacts of COVID-19 to best practices to address disparities from the pandemic, to also leading conversations in our community that promote equity. And last but not least, today marks the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment guaranteeing and protecting women's constitutional right to vote. And shortly after that, after its ratification, St. Paul's, um, excuse me, South St. Paul's Margaret Newburg became the first woman to vote in the United States after the passage of the 19th Amendment. And I had the honor to attend today to celebrate the anniversary and to honor Margaret. And that was here, right in St. South St., sorry, South St. Paul. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Lehman?
First, I attended a scale meeting and, well, two scale meetings. One was all school. It had the superintendents throughout the county, the county health lady, and the scale membership, and it was exclusively about the, the schools and what their challenges are. And after listening to all of that, well, participating, I think the general public doesn't realize just how complicated the task really is. Not only are they trying to abide by guidance and mandates, but they're also trying to do the educational piece, and then they've got the internal issues, whether you've got teachers doing the at-home video teaching or the, in the classroom. Then you got the busing and, and everything else, lunches that go along with it. So it's, 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 it's more complicated than the general public realizes, and the reporting and, and all of the COVID-related stuff. So I just wanted to say that, kudos to the hard work that everybody's doing to try to make it happen. I know there's people on both sides of the issue. I know there's people on both sides of the issue. There is no winner, I guess. You've just got to do what you can do. Other places that have been trying these things where the caseloads have gone up, they've, you know, two, three weeks later, they're closed and they're doing only at-home learning. So let's knock on wood that that doesn't happen here. But who knows? The second, the other scale meeting, non-school related, had a couple of topics. One was, Scale Considered a Candidate Forum. That was discussed at length, people all over the aisle on it. I personally don't want to see Scale become a political body and, and hold candidates to support their views on topics and endorse candidates. I think that was a general feeling of the group. Not necessarily opposed to Scale educating the general public on what it is they're trying to accomplish and what their mission is. Another topic that was discussed was hiring a full-time lobbyist to lobby on behalf of Scale. I was opposed to that. I think the best lobbyists Scale could possibly have are their members who are paying members. And I pointed that out to Prior Lake when they were trying to get some assistance on the development fee reimbursement issue. That Shakopee did pass a resolution of support and did write a letter. And this is what membership does. My concern about having a lobbyist is you may have members that are opposed to something actually paying for the lobbyist to lobby against that community's position. So good discussions. The other issue that they discussed with the police chiefs in the county and the Scott County Sheriff's Office was, we all know we have a Southwest Metro Drug Task Force, we have a tri-city SWAT team, these types of things. Would it be a good idea for a collaborative effort amongst the membership to put together some kind of a response to any civil-type situations? We're in the informational stages. That'll be probably going a little further with our chief of police and administrators throughout the membership to weigh in on. Personally, it's probably not a bad idea. I'd guess I'd have to, devil's always into details for administrators and chiefs and sheriffs and stuff to work out. So we'll see where that goes. I also attended the 169 corridor coalition meeting, items of discussion, the, the DC Transportation Alliance fly-in. Scott County's position under the COVID is they will not be doing that. So the coalition is, we now have an option to do that virtually. I think it was 200 bucks a person. I believe that's paid for out of the coalition dollars that we pay in to as members. I may have to take a full day off of work to do that. I'm looking at potentially doing that. Representative Andrew Craig will be in the neighborhood looking at the 282-169 issue. If you're not aware with that intersection, it's out by Wolf Motors in Jordan. It's an AT grade signal crossing, a lot of accidents, a lot of injury, a lot of death. That's the next AT grade crossing of concern. So she'll be touring that. It's going to be a limited tour with the, the chair of the Scott County, the mayor and administrator of Jordan, very well separated with mask. And then a meeting at the regional training facility for people from the coalition to talk corridor issues. There again, it's going to be limited because of COVID. There's also a bluff road issue she's going to be looking at. The 41-169, what do they call it? Divergent? I can't remember what they call that new overpass. It's different than everything, different than anything else. Divergent, diamond, is that what it's called? I think that's what it's called. But looking at an opening date, end of project, end of September, early October, depending on, you know, weather and construction issues. They did have one small, well, I shouldn't say small, one construction issue arise, they're dealing with it, shouldn't prolong the, the project. And we'll be doing a grand opening of some sort. There again, it's in the planning stages due to COVID, but we're going to make some effort at it anyway. I think that's all I have.
Councilor Lehman, thank you. And certainly, we were talking just on the earlier item on the Innovation Center and that enjoys broad support in Scale. It actually was a Scale topic for five years, trying to get some traction. And actually Shakopee is trying to step up to the plate and provide that. So certainly you can carry in some water back to Scale and, and get some support rounded up and some partners.
There was one more thing here in my notes that I missed. The 169 MINDPAS study from Marshall Road north of 494, there's a couple of options, the 55 and the 394 option. That's getting taken back off the shelf. Going to do an update on it. That update is going to be paid for by the 169 Coalition. There's interest from MINDOT and we're looking at getting some other interested parties, which is why we're updating it. So hopefully at some point, I know there's 15%, surface transportation dollars are down 15% because of COVID. So it's going to be critical, it's going to go down further, I'm sure. It's going to be critical that the priority projects rise to the surface where the biggest bang for the dollar is. And I keep saying that the river crossing is an issue. If we think we're going to open up our economy, when it does open up 100%, we're going to have the parking lot issue again. And, and we're growing, so that parking lot's going to grow. So that has always been a top priority for me and it still is. So we need to get that capacity increased crossing that river and we need to address the issues all the way up past 494.
All right. Councilor, thank you very much. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My MVTA meeting is coming up, but I did get news that they did receive $2.8 million in a federal transportation or transit package for upgrading the Bernsfield Transit Station. So that'll help out near our area. And I also have a question and possibly this can go, come back in the future, but there's a lot of concern out there about mail-in voting. And I'd like to see if we can have our city clerk, Lori, give us an update on how folks can drop their ballots off or where they can drop them off without having to mail them in. Can we get that?
Thank you. So noted. Councilor Brennan?
Well, to kind of to tag on that, I attended the, certified the election results for the primary and it was reported that 45% of the votes that were done in Scott County were done absentee ballot. So it, it's a good question that Jay has asked. I've talked, attended a couple of the SPUC meetings. We've had two since we've last met. Last Thursday, we had a closed meeting to hear the findings and recommendations by the investigative entity. During open session, these actions were approved by the commission. SPU manager exceeded salary cap of 2017 through 2019 and is, is currently in 2020. The commission directed to seek guidance to, to readjust the salary cap and to determine a payback. Council or commission directed to search for an accounting firm to determine the overpayment for 2017 through 2019 and the current year and to establish a repayment plan. The acting finance director is to contact the PARA, which is the retirement plan relating to the repayment, retirement calculation. The commission on only packets are a violation of the open meeting law, staff to provide policy and procedures and consults with council and contact League of Minnesota Cities for staff and commission training on open meeting law compliance. And there is no, the attorney felt that there was no intentional submission of documentations or alterations, but there will be a compensation study to make sure that all, a study to make sure that all, that is done correctly in, in the future. Now, these are all, these are all things that have to occur. These are things that have to be adjusted. And there's still disciplinary actions that taking place and being worked through and that's part of the closed meeting. I can't speak to that, but there is more to come. Like I said, these are just things that have to be brought back into place to correct the actions that were taken. Let's see, there was an update at the last meeting, which was last night. The League of Minnesota has been contacted to make recommendations and to provide recommendations for an auditor. The legal counsel talked to the state of Minnesota Auditor's Office, but there was some concern about the timing, about how quickly they could do that. They also talked to ABDO, Aiken Meyer, and that is what the council recommends for the commission to, to use. There's a negotiating repayment plan that's being worked on and the term is sheet is with John Crooks and John Crooks' attorney. So that could be coming back at any time. The League of Minnesota training was discussed and that will be coming back for, for staff and for the commission. The, the council created a commission with the interim finance director to work with the City of Shakopee HR Director and Commissioner Mokel and Commissioner Fock and to be part of the wages and benefits subcommittee. I think that's it. I think that's all I have on that. There's a lot of things that are in process and in the works. We also had a, a legal document that came to us that required the utilities manager's signature. So we have Commissioner Mokel and President Amundson signing that legal document for the utilities manager, since he's not able to do so. That's all I have.
Councilor Brennan, thank you very much. Got everybody covered there for your mayor report. I don't have a liaison report. However, I do want to make a mention of a happy birthday to Councilor Brennan.
Oh.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. This is, this is the best birthday I could have sitting here.
At a council meeting. Well, happy birthday.
Mine was the last meeting, so it's all fair.
Our, next up, our administration report. Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing this time around, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, other business before this board. Other business. Seeing none? We would move ahead then to item number 10. Councilors?
I would make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Whiting to adjourn to September 1st, 2020. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The motion passes. We stand adjourned at 9:02. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.